Alright, everybody had a chance to read the minutes. Any additional corrections from previous minutes? Motion to approve. So move. Second. Second. I want to hear your second. All in favor? Alright, and then next, I guess we need to do an amendment, uh, agenda amendment. If we could, Mr. Pete and Carol Moore have asked that we allow them to speak so they can leave and get to work, and they want to speak to us about the library board, so I would ask that we move, uh, not all of the library board conversation, but we move their parts up and create a 3A. Do I have a motion to do that?
Much motion to allow him to have a little speech.
Second. All in favor? Alright, and we have, uh, then that brings us to part 3A, Mr. and Ms. Moore. Come forward and speak.
Well, good morning. My wife and I got interested in the board in January. When we showed up at the meeting, we discovered that there were only four of us there. My wife and I, the director and the branch manager. We really believe that the, uh, the library board needs some guidance from the county commissioners. Up until November, November was the first, was the first time there was more at the library for eighteen months. So there's, uh, I mean, there's a number of issues that need to be addressed. How many, how many members should represent? But one of the agencies, there's, there's just a lot of work that basically the library board has been a fun. We went to a regional board meeting, and even though Ms. McCree is now the chairman, and she's very able, it was quite obvious that they were used to operating with women and children after that. So we really do need your help to get the library board running and functioning like it should. My wife will go with the things.
The first handout I'm going to give you is what we piece together as the organizational accountability chart. As you well know, any public funds have to be in a check and balance system in terms of their use and application, and it became obvious to us that one of the first things was that this board and the director were unclear as to who and what constitutes their accountability system. And as you can see, the Lanier-Lakeland Public Library is part of the South Fork Regional Library, which reports to the state agency known as Georgia Public Library Service, which is a part of Board of Regents, which goes to the governor's office, and that is the accountability system. Of that, over and over again, we have come up with the fact that all funding agencies should have representatives and involvements in the library board for the obvious reasons. That's the trustees. Okay. Alright, the first thing that, if this is a handout of trustees' job description, and most of this material was pulled from the Georgia Public Library Services manual called Tools for Trustees online, and it is echoed somewhat in the constitution of bylaws of the regional library system, and the bylaws, which is the only entity that exists in our local board. Of course, it affirms that we have a sacred public trust, that the responsibilities of the board are finance, policy, planning, personnel, and advocacy, that the final authority for all library operation ultimately is the South Fork Regional Library, so in other words, our board makes decisions and then moves it to the regional library board for ultimate approval and action. The biggest responsibility is the adequate securing of funds that cover the library services, and that this requires trustees who are educated, and that was one of the first problems that we saw when three of us who could show up on our own in the January meeting discovered is that we asked some questions that were not answered, and when we went back as a group of board members in April, we weren't given any more educational training. When you, Mr. Lee contacted, had your office contact Pete and I about a meeting concerning the library carpeting, at that point, we had to realize that there was a whole lot we didn't know, and we were concerned since it was a governmental entity, that we were going according to whatever existing laws and procedures needed to do, which was our hesitation and not meeting with you. At that point, we were able to get a copy of the bylaws, and because I do some writing, I had asked for the history of the local libraries in order to do some writing, and I was able to get some things from the archivists at the regional library to further educate me, and that led me into looking online and discovering the Tools for Trustees manual that the Georgia Public Library Service provides. This is, let's see here, alright. If you'll hand this out, these are the primary service standard appendix F in that manual, and it basically reiterates the fact that the library receives funding from its supporting agencies, that every community has a responsibility to have its agencies involved with the library and providing funding. The next thing that we're going to hand out here is the member job description, so in other words, we've been looking for the trustee job description in order to better educate ourselves, and this is the appendix G in the manual. With two suggestive job descriptions, you can see that they pretty much reflect similar kinds of things, just different wording. The next thing that I'm going to hand out is, again, from the manual, and this gets into the relationship between, like, the county commission, funding agency, and our local library board. And one of the things that has occurred to us is that our library board members, when they're appointed by the county commission, and of course, the other two funding agencies locally are the schools and the city, that the members from those particular entities just says members from the county commission should report back regularly, and had that been done over time, I don't think that there would be some of the questions that have occurred recently. Okay, the next thing is the library board criteria. This is, again, from the manual, and it basically indicates the criteria on which board member should be selected. In addition to that, I have a copy of the appendix B, which is the board profile worksheet, and the, if you read the other appendix, you'll note that it refers to this worksheet, and that this is criteria that can be used in the selection of library board members by any of the funding agencies. The final thing that we're handing out is a copy of the Lanier-Lakeland bylaws, which is the only entity. Now, the other things, couple of things I could have copied and didn't, but I do have copies, my personal copies here in a notebook are the constitution of the Lounes Valdasta Library, and, let's see, what's the other one? I can't think of it right now. But there are a couple of other, oh, I know, the original state contract that basically brought the Lanier-Lakeland Free Library, or Local Library, into the South Fork Regional Library System. And what we've been struck with all along is that most of these documents are several decades old, and most of them have not been updated. It's recommended that the constitution of bylaws be reviewed every five years by the local board. There, even in the existing bylaws, if you look at the Lanier local bylaws, you're going to see that there is accountability, and it mentions the fact that the local board member appointed by a funding agency should report back to the, its funding agency and let you all know firsthand what's going on, and that library trustees are responsible for being visible at community meetings and promoting the library just generally. We have a very fine system, but there are some operational things that need to be worked on. As in response to that, you will notice the covering letter of which you have a copy. There are a series of things that we feel that the county commissioners need to ask and get answers to, and we ask this as citizens, as well as the fact that we have served as your trustee delegates, and that we currently have our applications on file to be considered to continue that responsibility. Part of this has to do with the over expenditures that this board has talked about on and off since at least October, when in fact, I got in into a discussion with one of the commissioner elects and provided me a copy of the minutes of that meeting, and we talked about the fact that it was a hot discussion, why were there over expenditures from the board or library that typically is, is not over expended? We believe that this has to do with renovations. The renovation issue, its funding, the bidding, the whole application of all of that raises a lot of questions. We went to the July meeting as your representative. No funding information was brought up. The only discussion that was brought up at that time was related to Mr. Lee's concern over the carpeting in the building, and no other issue was involved. We've had a lot of interesting communications between the library director and ourselves, which we've been trying to sort through. We believe there's some personnel issues that perhaps need an executive session to talk about those particular issues. At this point, I'll give it to the budgetary items and the procedural things, which I believe that the county commissioners can help us sort through. There are a number of questions here about the renovations. When we went to the November meeting, we learned that someone after the July board meeting had walked into the library and said, gee, this place needs a facelift, and offered to pay for it, and that actions were taken on that verbalization, and that that individual in the end did not cover the funding. In sorting through and trying to find that information, I believe instead of getting a regular library funding report, I think that you all are actually registering the collected funds, maybe of the county and the schools and the city, which comprise the budget for a local library, and that it is the county administrator that cuts checks, essentially makes payments for things like the operational expenses. And we believe that if there is some checking, that expenses that involve the renovations were paid for out of those funds, which is why there is an over expenditure. And if it's not corrected, it's going to affect the ability to keep lights on over there, let alone the door open at some point. So this is a fairly serious concern. We also have been concerned about membership. One of the points that Pete and I made at the last board meeting was that, that when we look at the Lounes Valdasta Library Constitution, we are clear that the representation from the funding agencies is based on the percentage of monies that are given. So if the school system is giving almost an identical amount as the city, and they're getting two, two people each, and that's 50% of the funding, that the county commissioner should in effect, have four members present. And with these kinds of budgetary issues, I think this is almost critical in terms of the accountability that, and responsibilities that the commissioners have relating to the library. We also have been concerned that, different from the bylaws, that we've had a person who up until recently talked on behalf of the board of the library without even being a board member, and we are concerned about how that person was authorized, and the fact that, again, it appears that a chain of command was not followed, and it has agitated and created some pretty strong emotions among the various people and agencies that this individual connected themselves to. We also think that we need to address the, you have a comment? Okay. It is clear to us that there are some recommended guidelines for the appointing of these, and that we would hope not only that you ask questions about this and verify what we are stating to you today, but that you've asked for the upcoming constitution, they are talking about writing right now, and the bylaws reflect all of that stuff, so that individuals such as yourselves don't have to hunt and do the kind of hours of research that we have to do in order to get this information. There are some other operational issues, and I'll just end it by saying that in addition to that, it would help us, because it was told to us that when we were asked to serve on the library board by the library director in January, and we accepted, we did not realize that our names would come before the county commission, or that we would be agents of the commission to that board. We had no idea really until April, when we walked in the meeting and we had a couple of people say, hey, your name was in the paper, and we weren't sure why that was the case. But again, we did not get training, we've had to piece this together, and I apologize for the time that it has taken out of your schedules and so forth to deal with the whole library issue, because it could have been circumvented by having better education and training, and that's what our interest is, to get our board functioning according to the guidelines of the Georgia Public Library Service, and have the accountability taken care of, so we can just go on with good library operating.
We appreciate that, and your interest and concerns, and educating us as well. I know we've got possibly other folks to speak about it later on, I'm not sure if anyone's here to do that, but we appreciate you doing that, and we are hoping to, you know, have answers and make appointments in January to the library board, so we appreciate your recommitment to serve and for the literature that we can hopefully share us any questions we have, or, because we certainly, I don't, and I think we were kind of in the dark a little bit about exactly how everything operated, but thank you again, and we'll take everything under consideration.
Okay. I had meant, one of the things I had meant to bring was an application that a county commissioner group in another area had done, just generally get that it's available online through their website for any person who is interested in applying to any of the boards, and it's just fairly simple, it lists the boards that the county commissioners routinely apply for, and people can submit those to be considered, and then you have a pool in addition to any other thing. The other problem that we've encountered is just getting accurate and up-to-date information from the current website, and I think that it would benefit the community to keep that better updated, maybe include some things that aren't currently, for instance, the meeting, all of the 2011 meeting dates are listed, none of the 2012. And that's just one example. But there are increasing number of organizations that are working on the transparency issue, and really educating the public so that we can be better supporters of this process. I hate to even say that I'm the age where I am, and I'm just now really taking an active role, but over the last year, a friend of mine and I challenged each other to start showing up at local meetings, and just finding out what the heck was going on, so it's been an interesting experience, and I appreciate your time.
Just a second, I have one question for Mr. Moore, Ms. Moore, before we go, concerning the renovation of the library. You guys have did some preliminary research, or you guys going to continue to work on that, to try to find out how much this renovation costs, who's that individual that said they were going to pay for this renovation that is now being paid for by public money? Not to embarrass that person that said they were going to pay for it, but if you guys use public money, funds, we should know when and how it's going to get expended.
No, I didn't, didn't the money come from the library?
I think that's something the county needs to investigate themselves, right, which is perfectly correct. The county owns the building, so it's the county's place to decide.
Right, I agree, attorney, but however, that was a specific budget, this, the regional library board made the decision to expend X amount of dollars, I don't know if they use all county money, but we need to find out.
That's under the county's, that's under the county's.
I mean, they can't find out what needs to be applied with it.
We haven't submitted any change.
No, sir, we have not paid for any of the renovation. We did speak with the director, and we told her we didn't have the funds available, but at the time she said she would take care of it. We have not paid for the renovation, we give them a budget of portion of every month. That's what we've been doing for years, so we've not given any money for renovation.
I'd leave another question. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to our department reports. Chief Bowman, that'd be you with the guard of our court case.
Okay, activity for November 2012. Fire Department's answered 29 calls, seven of the 29 were EMS calls. The county had 20 of the 29 calls, and 13 of the 20 paid it. I put the county's paper a month at $1,910. Fire repairs, we had a blowout on engine two, required two tires, but I was able to get some tires off the trucks we had out of service, so we saved about $1,100 bucks on that by using those tires on those trucks. Just had to pay the labor to have them swapped out. The truck we traded for, the Teterville truck, is now in service at the station, truck nine it is, and they're on, they're back in compliance if the man comes in for inspection, we ain't got any problems there. Only other thing going on, I met with Ben Coakley Friday, who went out and laid out a plot of land for the station down there. He's agreed to give us a piece of dirt that'll be 100 by 50, 50 wide and 100 deep. Instead of having to survey and stuff, I think we can just draw up the thing for a 99-year lease for a dollar, like we did with the rest of them, instead of having to go through all the other expense. He said that would be fine with him, just do a 99-year lease on it. It's just a 50 by 100 plot, it's going to require some clearing and some dirt, which I'm sure the county can handle that. So I still got to go out and lay it out, I can lay it out myself as far as, I've got a transit load to do that with, to get it squared up where it needs to be, and he'll get the final okay when I do that, and then we'll just move forward as the money allows to get started on that station down there. It's just going to be a simple one base station, like the one south on Stockton. We don't have a training area or bathroom or nothing like that, it's just a one base station, just to house the trucks, all over there.
That's going to be a substation.
It'll be, it'll be a pilot station to Lakeland, is what it'll be, and it'll pick up everybody on the south end with their insurance in mind. Virgil and John David and Phillip and all them over on that side, and then we got Bob and all his buddies across the road, everybody, all his neighbors there, you know, are all in tens now, so it'll pick all them back up. Then we're, I guess we're starting working on the 122 out that way, I mean, we're going to do this as money allows, so, you know, just a lot to take years, so. At least with this one, this is going to be a small expense, the bill is not going to be that much, we already have a truck for it, we can move forward and get it certified and get it underway. Soon as we can get all that going, I'll update you every meeting to sit down and score on.
Chief, I've been asking you about truck inspections.
Oh, yeah, I called Danny, he was busy at the time. It's right here at the Holiday, probably ain't going to get it done with the truck, but again, the trucks probably ain't put 100 miles on them since they was last inspected. I mean, the Lakeland trucks get way more miles than any of them, but basically all he does is check the lights and the brake lines, I mean, I'm sure they ain't worked their brake lines in 100 miles, and the lights and all should be checked by the fire. I mean, that's their job, make sure all their lights are working, turn signals, all that's checked, it's supposed to be monthly, so there's not a problem there, it's just the brake issue, and all the trucks now have air brakes, which air brakes take care of themselves, if you have a problem with air brakes, you lose air, your brakes lock down, the truck can't move, so, I mean, it's pretty much a simple, you know, so. They did probably act at the first because of the cause of the Holiday that came out, you know.
How often is it inspected?
Once a year. Inspection, it's a DOT inspection I started doing after our incident, started doing it once a year, it's basically just a, he'll run, checks all of them, you know, he'll check the lights and everything, he'll check the brake lines to make sure they're okay, if he has a new, new kind of adjustment, he'll do that, and just pretty much put a sticker on the side that says truck was inspected this day, you know, that's all it is.
The last inspection, you know, it's been?
I have not a clue, I'm sure it's been just a little over a year, yeah.
We talked about last month, doing it this month, and they talking about next year. Last month, we talking about doing it before the year's out.
Yeah, well, I called Danny, and he was just busy, and I don't know if he'll get time to do, I can't, I can't tell you, he's the man that does it, I can't tell you his schedule. He's going to have to cut loose, bring a service truck, and come over here and spend a whole day going around all these trucks, you know, I mean, all English said, hey, when can you come? If he can't come, he can't come, I mean, I can't go make him a dragon. a dragon. I do my best to get him here before he.
That's fine. And when you follow up, I think we have some, some, some firemen with some concerns and they like won't do it.
Mr. Chairman, on the department inspection that's going to do the trucks, so what's the course of action for those trucks that are overdue during inspection?
A little louder.
What is your course of action or another way of measure to say these trucks overdue inspection, firemen don't drive it, it's out of service? What are you going to do?
Well, I mean, no, they're not out of service just because they hadn't been inspected. I mean, this truck's sitting right here for 30 something years without being inspected. I mean, this is just something I just started. And it's basically a paper trail because I have no paper trail with the incident with it. So basically, I'm creating a paper trail of these trucks. So at least I have something to say, hey, now these trucks have been checked.
This is my question. If they're required to be inspected once a year and we overdue, something's wrong.
Right. I agree with you 100%.
So what do you do?
But this, this is not, but this is not a state requirement. You do understand that.
It's not a state requirement, it's a county requirement?
This is, this is something we start. This is not a state requirement.
So, so we're not going to follow our own rules? We're going to basically?
Right. We're just breaking our own rule. We're not breaking a state rule.
We're not breaking a federal rule or a state rule?
We're breaking our own.
Understanding it's, we're tied for trucks. But also, we've got to take care of our firemen that do the work. We also got to take care of the citizens to not have a legal lawsuit. God forbid we have another accident. So we need to make sure we're doing something as Commissioner Bennett just said. We talked about the last one, talking about again this one and still not done.
Albert, if you will, how about you and Gary communicate and y'all talk to Danny Strickland and try to get a tentative date for an inspection, hopefully before year end. And if not, then if we have it down, then we'll know hopefully it'll be within the next 30 days.
Is Mr. Strickland the only one who can do it?
Probably expensed by, I don't know. Does he, what's he charge you, Gary, or does he do that as a favor? Ben, he's a volunteer fireman.
I can't figure out how much it is per unit to check. It's not that.
Is there anyone else that could do it that's?
I don't know. He kind of does us a favor because he is fire chief over there and, you know, he does it.
Maybe phone call may, may spur him. Y'all might communicate that they're working that together.
If y'all don't have any questions, I'll step outside and call him again right now. Try to get a little quicker.
We have people that, we have people that are really concerned in my area because that person's got a name and it's got a flag over his, where he got killed at. So people are upset about the fire trucks that don't want that to happen again.
Well, I can, I can totally understand that. But again, if I felt like the truck was running down the road every day and had an issue, yes, but a truck sitting in a barn does not go sour. Now, the brakes are not going out. And that's basically the main, main thing here is the brakes. You don't wear out brakes in 100 miles or 200 miles. And the lights, they should be checked in the sales. So, I mean, I could understand it totally where you're coming from. But you've got to understand also, you're talking about a vehicle that sits around in a barn all day long.
We're talking about anyone.
I know you're talking about that too, but you're not talking about a semi truck that's running a half a million miles a year.
Like the one person? I, you need that truck, that truck looked at by somebody.
Again, I can't make the man come do it. But then again, it's not a big issue. It's just Ben trying to put out. You misunderstand.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be fair to you. If one guy that's been doing the truck inspections, if he's the only one, then you get somebody else.
I don't know. I used him in the beginning because he's right here. And also, he gives us a little better deal because he is fire chief over there and we work hand in hand. So, you know, I, I don't know what, I know what you're saying, but I don't know if there's anybody else that'll do the DOT inspection. I don't know anybody that can.
We need to, we need to find somebody else because as this Bennett said, we cannot put our firemen in harm's way. We cannot afford a lawsuit because we knew the inspection was not overdue and we're about to leave. Our own county rules, that is not good.
I agree with you 100%.
Albert, y'all are going to, y'all are going to find out and get us a date for that inspection or even we'll be calling somebody else.
I'm going to go call him right now and see if I can get an update right now. Let you know for the meeting.
All right. Thank you. All right. Bob, I haven't seen Bob.
Yeah, but he's, he's spilled out though.
Okay.
And John Gessger is in training this morning.
All right. Can you update that road department? I mean, it'd be nice if we could give a little rain. It's just as great as I know to do a better job.
I know it was a couple of those bad ones that happened out there. One right there. He called me this morning. Glenn's back, but he's not 100% and he's gotten him out. Best guy for jury duty today.
I don't know, for all he's in school, so EMS, ready to pack?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't want to stir a horn's nest any word, any further, but just to let you know, our ambulance is inspected every 30, every three months. We take them to Langdale Ford, Nero Tire. Nero Tire does do DOT inspections, but they're not required for our ambulance. But I do ask them to do the inspection, Nero Tire. But I do ask them to do that anyway, even though it's not required, just bumper to bumper, if something's wrong, fix it. But it might be something you can do with the fire trucks as.
I think if you call the DOT, the DOT will come out and fill your charge for inspection.
As far as EMS, we had 94 calls. Sixty-one of those were in Lakeland, up in Teagerville, Three Mud Creek, 13 West Side, 10 Stockton. We called mutual aid a total of five times last month and we were called as mutual aid. Excuse me, I said that backwards. We called mutual aid six times and we were called out five times to help other counties. We're kind of equated out this month. We transported 13 patients to Lewis Smith and 50 to South Georgia Medical Center. Of the 50, we transported 22 of them came from Lewis Smith Hospital to South Georgia. We transported a total of 68 patients. The EMS consultant and I had a conversation Friday at the request of the administrator, Mr. Ginty, if you want to know where we were at on getting the billings to you. And I told him all we lacked was a signature. And I confirmed with EMS consultants, they, the first representative they had working with us wanted me to apply for a new license as Lanier County Board of Commissioners. She didn't realize you were already on the license as Lanier County Board of Commissioners. So that's stopped that hurdle. Another concern was we have to get a bank account at the bank as Lanier County EMS. And I just want your permission to open that account that Donna, however you normally handle county accounts, it'd be handled exactly the same. I don't want any, any control of the account. It shouldn't be to where I'm paying bills. It's handle it just like you normally handle it.
You're saying that the county would take over the billing for the ambulance service, the EMS service. That's just something, probably need to have a little meeting with.
Well, we've discussed it now for several months. It's the, it's the way it's billed out. It's owned by the county and it's owned by hospitals. It's already on it.
Well, you're not taking responsibility of the deals that's created. The money's just coming to your account. And then however you want to do it, once a month, you give the money to the hospital. It's, it's the money that was created from the ambulance college.
The hospital does the billing. The money just comes to this separate account. Is that what you're telling me?
Right. Well, the EMS consultants will do the billing. The hospital will be 100% out of that. It's a company that, that does, that does EMS billings. They know how to bill. They know the proper ways to get it.
They want a contract entered into between the county and them?
Right.
Do you have it? Someone looking?
Yes, I've given it to Donna. And I'll get it to you again. That was the one I emailed to you with all the paperwork.
Okay.
Miss Chairman. Donna, I'll get it back to you again. That was several months ago. We were waiting, this started, this is several months ago, and Mr. Ginty told me not to sign anything. And now he's asking where we're at on it. And we're really basically done, other than the signature and starting the account.
Okay. Well, Suzanne and I were going to try to look at the EMS contract with the hospital. So would it be okay if we look at all that together and do that?
All this does, now this has nothing to do with how much of your budget that you're giving the hospital. This has nothing to do with that. This is just to collect the money. When I'm making the calls of the 68 people we transported, this company will send them the bill or the insurance company or Medicaid or Medicare within just a few days, a few hours of us getting it.
I mean, that's the part A and the part B that we talked about.
Right. The hospital does part A, which is bundled with the hospital bill. And it's kind of like that commercial where they knock on the door and go bundled. Nobody knows what they're paying. With this company, you get a bill from Lanier County EMS. It says your ambulance ride to the hospital, nothing with doctor fees or, you know, your pay at the hospital or anything. This is your ride. And then the insurance company usually pays that a lot quicker. There's no question that this person was picked up from this ride, their period at the hospital paid the bill.
And again, we open up the account, the bill starts coming in, we put the money in there.
Right. You have no extra work. Donald doesn't have to keep up with who paid what. This company does everything. They just send the money to another account and it's done electronically. That's why it has to, to be in the county's name. That way, it's no reason or no way they put money in my account. That's what they're trying to make sure they don't do. It's your account and you have access to it.
For the ambulance license that we already have.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got the draft that we were providing the hospital last meeting. Kind of contradict what Randy just said from the hospital.
We, we haven't even gone over that. I didn't even start it.
So that's why I'm breaking this point up because this relates to the billing. Because right here in this draft, it says, Lewis Smith Hospital should have complete control over the operations of EMS and all personnel. Also, it says fees for county, in and out of county transport by the ambulance units shall be fixed by LHS and shall be entity to all fees collected.
Johnny, they just put up a generic contract and asked us to go over it. We hadn't touched it with anybody. So there's going to be a lot of changes to that.
Definitely a lot of changes because I don't agree with this draft. One important is the contract says we'll provide LHS X amount of dollars per month for total annually.
We, we, that's just, he just gave that to us and said, here's something we found and pulled up, but that's nothing like what we're going to do.
And 95% of the responsibilities, liabilities is on the county versus the hospital. Also...
Johnny, I'm being honest with you, that's under number 12 old business and we're going to get to that. We ain't touch.
Well, Randy brought it up. Just make sure it touches basis just because he's gone. So he'll know that this has not been signed, this has not been went over. And there's a lot of issues in this hospital contract that I have.
Suzanne, I have not seen that contract. They haven't let me look at it at all. All I'm trying to do is, when we came up with this several years ago, the way to collect more money. The more money we collect from the people we're serving, the less money the county has to give us as a subsidy. So we're not collecting the money that we could collect. And they didn't understand that because they've never understood that you own us.
Let me say this one thing, while most of the citizens here. It also says in this draft that the LHS should provide certified personnel to operate one ambulance 24/7. And county's going to provide more money. My thought is we should get more than one ambulance service on 24/7. That's my thought.
I mean, the second ambulance is going to cost double what one cost. I mean, it's, but I mean, we all know we need a second ambulance, but.
I'm trying to start with baby steps. Let's collect the money that's due to us first. And just show that we can do better in collections. And then, once we can show them that.
Well, could you just, could you maybe get us a letter requesting us open that account? Have someone sign it and then?
I'll work with Donna and I'll give her the copies again because this, we started and it starts rolling, then it dies down, and then it starts rolling again, then it dies down. I knew when Donna looked on her face, she's like, you sent me what? I'll get it for you again.
I've got it.
But maybe to say this so the citizens will know, the county provide a lot for EMS. You buy the ambulances. You provide $9,000 annually to the hospital for sport EMS. You take in a license. And there's a lot of issues about EMT life, liability insurance, the insurance on the vehicles. So the county, we're doing our part. I'm not against the hospital. I always say that. What I'm against is providing the hospital money if we're not going to get more for the citizens. And we need two ambulances. We don't need just one team to go over there and we don't have an ambulance service unless you've got a call for mutual aid. We've been going through that many more times. That needs to be put on the table.
Let me say one more thing. I need to step out before y'all start talking the contract because I can't get involved in, in that contract. But I do want to thank you and Mr. Ronnie for your years of service in backing Lanier EMS. I've got a meeting to attend and I got to go to. But I want to say this. Thank you very much for helping us. I know this is your last meeting. You two guys, thank you very much for coming in to try to help us. But I do want everybody to know, with your support, our ambulance service is a lot better than it was several years ago. And it wasn't anything other than we're sitting here talking. We let each other know what our needs are and you have never said no to anything that I've come up and shown you a need for. We have four new EMTs in our county because of this EMT class that we just got through with. Let me restate that. We've got four people that's passed the test so far. We've got a lot more to take the test that hasn't taken it. Two of them are Lanier County and two of them are Kent County. And it's, it's working. It's slow. It's painfully slow and everybody just kind of gets burnt out. But there's several folks that have worked really hard. One of them's sitting behind me back here and I know she's probably grinning. She has tried as hard as anybody. She's passed the test. She is now certified EMT. They give Stockton somebody to respond. But we're sitting here and we're rather than Stockton for a chest pain with your approval and we get everything going because you've got to be insured. I want them to be able to go and be taking care of the patient while we're getting there. And right now, they want to do it so bad that you don't understand why they can't. There's nothing covering them right now. And that's, that's the thing. We got to take in baby steps. Let's get the money flowing. Then let's get the training, understanding what we have to have liability wise to take care of these people. They're volunteer firemen responding right now as an EMT, which was my plan. And it is working. Thank y'all very much. But it's just, we want the best right now today. And it's just slowly getting there. With y'all's help, I appreciate it. And I hope I don't have anything else. The contract you're talking about, I can't get involved in that at all. That's Mr. Copeland, Mr. Ginty and y'all. All I'm trying to do is the operations of your ambulance service. Is there any questions on that part I could answer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to run, but I got to be, I'm supposed to have been at a ten. I'm a little bit late.
I tell you nothing. Did I ever get a hold of Dan? Told him the situation and the concerns of the board about the overdue. He said he's going to try to work in something on Wednesday. There's no guarantee. This week, he said, if he could do it, he would definitely try to do it this week, but still they couldn't give a guarantee. But anyhow, we're going to shoot for Wednesday. He said, I'll call you. We'll do all of it one time. It'll take all day. So that's the best I can do.
Well, you know, he does run a record service. I know that.
He goes, clicks brake alignment over there. He runs a record service.
And he runs the record service.
He has towed our trucks.
I-95 and everywhere else.
He has towed our trucks for free. So, yeah.
So that's, that's good. Thank you. We're getting it set up. Norm Willet, Forest Recreation.
Activity at the Recreation Department for November, my Nine Dance, LA Tech, hip-hop class, as well as karate. We also participated in the All-Star football and again, registration for upcoming basketball season.
Football season officially over?
Officially.
All right. We have any champions or anybody?
No champ.
No champs. Better luck next year.
Real good.
All right. Number five, Ms. Amy Lawless is here for Family Connection.
Hello. With Family Connection, right now, we've been partnering with the school to do, working on Toys for Tots. And there's a new coordinator for Toys for Tots in Cookville. So she's been.